Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December 18, 2012 at 9:00 a.m. Before we have the flag salute this morning, I wanted to take a minute of silence in remembrance of the victims of the Sandy Hook shooting last week, if you would please join me. And I'd actually, the flag salute says it will be led by me today, but I'd actually like to ask Holly Heinzen to lead us in the flag salute today because she never gets that opportunity.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot there, but thank you.
Fortunately, I know that.
Yeah. All right, if we could have the statement of meeting procedures read by our clerk of the board, Ann Holman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, December 18th, 2012. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now is the time for public comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to address the board on any item not on today's agenda, now is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comments, bring it back for supervisor committee reports. Any committee reports, anything new since last week? All right, seeing none, we will then move to our 9:00 a.m. timed item, County Executive Regional University Specific Plan. Holly Heinzen presenting. Holly, welcome.
Thank you.
Rob, welcome.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Holly Heinzen with the County Executive Office. Merry Christmas to you all. We are here today for your board to consider approval of a regional university specific plan fee and reimbursement agreement between Placer County and the funding parties for AKT and provide direction to county staff as may be required. As you may recall, some of you, the County Board of Supervisors adopted the specific plan fee in 2008. Last Tuesday at your meeting on December 11th, your board considered such an agreement that was submitted on behalf of Angelo Sokopoulos that would require the board to initiate a fee program to reimburse the family for expenses related to securing entitlements for the project. Following discussion, the board was receptive to considering the request and directed staff to engage in further discussions and return to the board today, December 18th, for consideration of an agreement. Several provisions of the initial proposal were of discussion and of concern in the board discussion last Tuesday. One was the ability to preserve capital, given the proposed interest rate on specific plan costs and the timeframe during which interest would be accrued, the uncertainty associated with new specific plan costs, the extent to which action by the board on this agreement would lock in the board or staff to adoption of a fee ordinance, and the overall policy issue or framework that was raised relative to reimbursement for entitlement costs. Given the issue raised, staff has proposed revisions to the draft agreement, and we understand that these provisions would be acceptable by the developer or the proponent. In this agreement, we've made several changes. One would be the ability to use an alternative approach in the proposed fee ordinance, such as an inflation adjustment that would address the time value of the upfront investment. We would provide more certainty in the ultimate cost by including only those expenses that are incurred up to the date that the agreement might be executed, and removing language that obligates the county to adopting the fee. In addition, there were a couple other changes I'd want to bring to your attention that are included in the agreement before you today. One is a change in the turnaround time from 60 to 90 days, and the second is removing county staff costs of $182,000 approximately. With that, we believe that this agreement addresses most of the issues that may be involved in this agreement to where, that addresses the issues raised by the board and were included in your discussion. We're happy to address any other questions you may have or take any comments or receive direction that your board may have.
Supervisor Duran.
Yes, Holly, during this last couple of days, did you have an opportunity to maybe poll some of our jurisdictions to see whether or not they enter into these types of agreements?
You know, I did talk to a representative from the city of Roseville. They do not enter into reimbursement agreements for entitlement costs, and they were pretty specific about that.
Okay. And as far as, from a legal standpoint, our legal counsel is satisfied that they can work with the agreement as it stands right now?
I would leave that for counsel to address, either Rob Sandman, who's with me here from counsel's office, or Mr.
I know there were a couple of concerns that you had with regards to specific language. Have those been?
Yeah, our concerns have been addressed in the revised agreement.
Completely resolved, okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Wegant, I believe you were next.
Question. Holly, on the interest rate thing, the language looks identical to me, but I don't have the other staff report in there, so it doesn't look changed.
Yes, and actually, we left in the language as it had been proposed, but the verbiage that prefaces that language indicates that the county would have the ability to employ an alternative mechanism to the interest that's identified in the agreement. So it just gives you the flexibility to say, we want to do an inflationary increase, we want to base our costs on something else. So I think during the time that the board would be, or the staff would be developing a fee program, we could look at interest, we could look at an inflationary index, we could look at, you know, what we otherwise, a property tax index sort of thing. So it just provides the flexibility.
And you anticipate that being resolved within 90 days?
Yes, prior to coming back to your board with any sort of fee program.
Okay, well, again, for me, it's a big deal. It's actually a deal killer, just so everybody knows. And, you know, I think the goal here is to preserve the purchasing power of the value of the dollars relates to the reimbursement itself. If we did a maximum of 6%, we all know that we're being lobbied pretty intensely as it relates to existing fees, trying to keep those down so the projects are economical, but at a rate of 6% at 12 years, the fee structure would double.
Mm-hmm.
And if the question is preserving just the purchasing power of the dollar, the appropriate fee would be an inflationary rate.
Mm-hmm.
And inflation this year, I think, is about 2.1%.
Mm-hmm.
And the difference as it relates to the impact on the cost of the fee itself going up, and the economic impact on the viability of the project diminishes dramatically. So that's a very important impact or component to me as it relates to when this does come back to us, just so.
Yes, and we have provided for that issue to be addressed. Hasn't been entirely resolved, but we certainly understand the issue and will work towards that end.
Good. Thank you.
Supervisor Yular.
Yeah, Holly, with whom at Roseville did you speak in regard to whether or not Roseville has done this?
Yes, I spoke with John Sprague in community development.
Huh. I actually happened to be with John Allard the day that their counsel had to hear an issue in regard to the West Park folks having to reimburse the Sierra Vista project for 400 acres worth of entitlement work that they did. I mean, I know for, I was there with John Allard the day that their counsel took this up, so I'm really surprised that John said they haven't done this because the Sierra Vista project absolutely did get reimbursed by the West Park folks for entitlement costs. Had nothing to do with infrastructure, was for the entitlement costs.
Right, and there's a distinction here, and we talked a little bit about this. There's an entitlement cost that a developer may put forward that benefits 20, 30 other existing property owners, and they receive the benefit of those entitlements, right? That can either be an internal reimbursement program, or the jurisdiction can administer that. That's very different than one developer who subsequently sells the property, or donates the property in this case, and charges folks further down the line. Because that is the point that when you look at what the value of the property, the entitlement cost should be reflected in the value of the property.
The city did play the role of essentially refereeing the reimbursement to make sure that the original developer did get reimbursed for the entitlement.
And the developer advanced the cost on behalf of many, many property owners.
Right.
So that is a different sort of reimbursement agreement for entitlements than we're talking about here. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I'm saying is it's a very different.
The role of the local jurisdiction is essentially the same regardless of who ultimately pays the reimbursement. The role of the jurisdiction is that administrative role of making sure.
In terms of the administrative role per se, it would be the same. In terms of the construct of the reimbursement agreement, very different.
No, absolutely, I get that.
Right.
But I just, I mean, just.
Yeah, and I see.
Roseville did find themselves in this exact position, absolutely.
And, well, it's not the exact position, and I think that's the distinction.
The administrative.
I just want the board, yeah. So, yes, there's an administrative function as opposed to the construct of the agreement sort of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, and that's why I asked you that question, Holly, is because I wanted, you know, obviously, in the last discussion that we had, I want to make sure that there are some distinctions, and in order for me to have that certain comfort level, we do have to get into the weeds on this. And there is, that situation is analogous to a donated land situation where, when you're saying that one developer advances all of these funds and really has no way to recoup those when he starts divvying up the parcels. Whereas in this instance, we have a situation where land's being donated, he doesn't have any mechanism because he's not selling the land, and therefore, he wants to, you know, be able to recoup those entitlement costs and use them, you know, as he deems necessary.
That is how that developer would.
And that's what I wanted, and I'm glad you clarified that. For me, you know, this whole, you know, this whole deal comes down to three things. Number one, do I want to encourage people to give governments land for projects? Absolutely. Number two, do I think a regional university is a tremendous benefit to not only Placer County but the region? Yes, absolutely. And number three, do I think that Placer County can be the catalyst and, I guess, the glue that keeps the project moving together? Absolutely, I think that's what we do. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Very good. Holly, I had a couple of sort of technical questions on this. In the staff report, it says ultimately it's anticipated that this work will benefit subsequent landowners developing property in this specific plan area. What happens if a subsequent landowner doesn't come forward to develop? Where does that leave us at the county?
Well, with this specific reimbursement agreement, if development doesn't occur, the fee's never applied, right? So, so within the scope of this reimbursement agreement, if a developer never comes forward, the fee is never enacted, and the developer never gets reimbursed.
Okay. And it also, in the staff report, says a preliminary estimate of the fee in current dollars based on costs identified indicates that the fee amount, if approved, would be approximately $2,300 per dwelling unit. Would those $2,300 in fees have been applied per dwelling unit in any case because those costs have already been expended? Would those have been basically rolled into the costs?
Well, presumably, that would be inherent in the sales price, and that's how a developer would make back their money for entitlement costs. Again, I think the point's been made that there's a donation involved here, so I think you can argue it both ways.
And I think, I think that question takes me to Robert's concern about the language in the contract speaking specifically to the interest that the county would be paying on this. And I understand and I see very clearly that there is language in here that says, or by such other adjustment mechanism as the county may determine. Are you looking for a specific direction today from this board as to what that adjustment mechanism should be? Because it sounds like Robert proposed something.
And we're very happy to take that direction today and didn't know how, you know, the board wanted to address that specific issue. As a staff, we would go back and look at, I think, the inflationary increase or the, you know, 2% Prop 13 or some mechanism like that, given the comments today.
Mm-hmm. From, so there's been a little bit of discussion about this donation of the property as it relates to this because the two are very clearly related. If for some reason this agreement does not come into place, what happens with the donation?
Well, obviously, that's going to be to some extent up to the Sokopoulos family because this is the reimbursement agreement, but I would remind the board that the property is currently designated as a university site for a period of 50 years. So I think it's been offered to Drexel University, they have declined, it would then otherwise go to a private nonprofit or the county.
And that leads me to my next question, which is, it's my understanding that if we take no action on the donation, which is not what we're discussing today, we're discussing a reimbursement, but the two are, you know, at least have some relationship. It's my understanding that the end of 2013, that property, I don't want to say reverts to the county, but becomes available to the county in some form. Can you explain that a little more clearly?
Well, the time period is this 2013 where the five years is up, and the agreement does not necessarily direct it to the county. It leaves it open to going to a private nonprofit or the county. And I don't know if counsel wants to opine further on that. I don't know that it's explicit that the county has to accept it. So I think that's the piece that is a little muddy here.
Well, acceptance of a donation is always a discretionary action by the county.
Right, so I just.
Understood, but.
Yeah, it would otherwise be available to the county in 2013 as part of the DA or another private nonprofit. It could be the end of 2013, the family identifies a private nonprofit that's willing to accept the property, they take it, they develop it, they receive the proceeds and use it for an educational purpose such as a regional university.
Without the county, though, having reimbursed the $9.05 million?
Right.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you, ma'am. My colleague Supervisor Duran makes some very good salient points about the benefit of this donation, but on the other hand, my colleague Supervisor Wegant brings up some interesting points. And the thing I'm struggling with, I've had developer groups in my office with projects in Western Placer, I don't want to say they're complaining, but they're concerned about the development fees that the county's imposing. So if we go into this agreement, we're going to have developer fees plus, pick a number, $2,300. That puts us in a difficult position with our other development groups, so that's the thing I'm struggling with. And, you know, this thing's come at me within the last two weeks. You know, I'm just kind of a simple guy. It takes me a long time to process and see exactly what we're doing here. And so at this point, I can't support this until we have more information or more dialogue. It looks like we're trying to rush this through in order to benefit the developer, and I understand that, but I can't make that decision with the information that I have. That's where I'm at with this.
Supervisor Yular.
The economics associated with viability of projects, the primary cost driver is land basis. When a developer acquires the property, you establish the land basis, and from that point, they have to make a decision. Do I think the three to six years it's going to take me to entitle this project and the $1 to $10 million it's going to take me to entitle this project, in addition to the land basis and my carrying costs of the money to acquire the land and entitle the land, then becomes the, your zero line for determining whether or not the project will yield any profit. We're talking about a project, if we adopt this fee, we're talking about a project that whoever ends up as the beneficiary of the donation will have only one cost associated with it, and it will be this particular fee. There will be zero land basis in it. There are zero costs associated with the carrying cost of the money in the seven, eight years that it took them to entitle this project. The only cost that whatever entity, whether it's the county or university or whatever, the only cost that will have to be covered, and again, not by the folks that end up holding the property, but by whomever buys it, will be the roughly $2,000 per EDU. Beyond that, 100% of what a builder pays will be pure profit for the purpose for which the project was donated. So would $2,300 in addition to everything else that normally would be paid, would that be a deal breaker? It might, but we're talking about a project where the $2,300 is the only thing that establishes a basis of cost. Everything else for the benefit of developing a university is profit for that purpose. And so I, while I too hear the arguments in regard to developer fees that get added, understand that what people are talking about there is, in addition to having to pay the land basis and the carrying costs and hopefully make some money, they have a $5,200 Sparta Tier Two fee that they have to pay, and then they have the ongoing service fees of between $2,000 and $2,700 per year that a homeowner is going to have to pay. Those are the kinds of things they're talking about. So will, will, will this reimbursement cost in any significant way jeopardize the ultimate value of this as it gets sold off? I can't see how, for the life of me, I can't see how. My primary objective is seeing that ultimately someday we are the beneficiaries of this, perhaps the single largest philanthropic endeavor that our region has ever seen, that we do realize a four-year university. And understand, again, please, let's not take our eyes off the ball. We're not talking about establishing a reimbursement agreement so that the person who fronted $10 million can put that money back in their pocket. They have very clearly made it known that they intend to then further donate that, those dollars that get reimbursed. They've got a good track record of making do on their word of offering things up for donation. They're telling us if we establish this reimbursement, the dollars that get collected from this reimbursement will also be donated for higher education purposes, some of it in our area, some of it in other areas, but they're not asking us to put $10 million bucks plus interest back in their pocket. They're asking us to establish a mechanism by which they can collect that money and make yet another donation. So from the standpoint of doing what we can to encourage these kinds of philanthropic endeavors in the future, again, I come back to the question that I asked last week. Is there any jeopardy to the county? And clearly, there's not. And all we're being asked to do today is to consider the agreement that would then have to be codified in an ordinance by our board within 90 days, I believe, we come back. And the board at that time, and staff has made sure this doesn't bind us to having to adopt the ordinance, simply puts us in a position of considering the ordinance within 90 days. The board at that time, if we feel that whatever interest rate gets established or whatever reimbursement mechanism isn't in our best interest or does substantially jeopardize the value of that gift long-term by virtue of a ballooning fee, the board has the authority to say, we're not going to adopt this ordinance, and therefore, there is no reimbursement agreement. So I'm going to ask that today, with all due diligence being paid by staff and our board to the particulars that board members have raised, that we move this forward and make a very public statement that our board does support these kinds of philanthropic endeavors. With that, I would make a motion that we consider approving the regional university's specific plan fee and reimbursement agreement between Placer County and the funding parties and/or, well, just leave it at that, and/or the funding parties.
Supervisor Yular, if you'd actually just indulge me, we have facility services here in CDRA. Just wanted to give them an opportunity to weigh in with any questions or concerns that either of those departments may have regarding this proposal. Was there anything that either of you chose to add to this? And then we also have the proponent here today, wanted to hear from them, see if there was anything they had to add to this. I don't want it to appear that we're rushing this process.
Chairman Montgomery, members of the board, Tim Tarrant for the Sokopoulos family. Just three quick things. First of all, we are, the agreement that counsel has proposed or put before you today is acceptable to us. Second thing, with regards to the interest rate, we heard you Supervisor Wegant, members of the board, whether you do that 90 days, whether you give direction today, that decision is going to be yours. And the language that counsel put in the agreement clearly does allow you to approve the interest rate that we propose or any other mechanism or adjustment factor that you deem appropriate. And then finally, because I think it's important to really be as candid as I possibly can, I've always have been with you, and I think it's the right, fair thing to do, what does this really mean in terms of developability of the property, success of the project, et cetera? What it really means, and Supervisor Yular came very close to it, if not hit it, when the university hopefully takes this property, or you take this property, and then that person or entity goes to sell the development project to generate the endowment for the university. There's going to be a market value at the time, which we hope is going to be as high as it can possibly be, but let's just say, we have about 3,000 units, and let's just say the value's $180 million. Actually, at the peak of the market in 2005, it was over 300 million, and that's what we were all hoping we could get, but that, those numbers we know now weren't very realistic. But let's say 150 to 200 million. Whoever buys it is going to look at this fee and say, okay, I've got to factor that into what I think it's worth because I'm going to have to pay that. So at worst, let's say it was 180 million, it might be worth 171 million, and the endowment would generate 171 million. I think our request to you is that, is it fair and right and just to, if it's all successful and only if it's successful, allow a reimbursement of the actual hard dollars that someone put out over nine years since 2003, not including time value of that money now because we only get an adjustment going forward, to reimburse that net of the endowment so that those people were made whole even though they did give all of the land for nothing? And actually, during those nine years, paid property taxes, a lot of other costs. And by the way, the number that we put in this fee here, there's no guarantee over the next 90 days that staff's going to approve all those costs, so that's the worst case that it could be. We think it's going to be close, but we'll see. So that's really what. So that's really what it is. And Supervisor Holmes, that's really what the consequence is. It's not really whether a developer will be successful. It's not because the land has got zero basis for the developer, for whoever is going to be generating this endowment. It really is just, the endowment would be slightly smaller, order magnitude 6%, 7%, I think if my math is right, and the numbers that I gave you just now. Okay? That's it. I have to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and second that motion, but I want to make it very clear why I'm going to second the motion. And it goes to something that you said, Supervisor Holmes. If we were voting on an ordinance today, I would be right there with you. But we're not voting on an ordinance. We're voting on the placeholder for the ordinance. And I've heard from legal counsel, they've told us that they feel comfortable working with the document as it stands. And I feel comfortable, based on their representation, that we can consider this over the course of the next 90 days.
Any additional discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Jerry?
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the item under anticipated litigation and return to report thereafter. They've zoomed in.
All right, well, we're recording.
The board has returned from closed session where they discussed the item of anticipated litigation, heard a report from council, and gave direction to council. That concludes the closed session report.
Having completed all agendized items, on today's agenda, we stand adjourned.